Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the September 3 meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Clerk, can you please call roll to determine a quorum?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Present.
Mayor Stone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Madam City Clerk, would you please go over the closed session agenda and any public comments, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no public comments. City Council will meet in closed session as stated on the agenda. City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 to enable the City Council to consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiators regarding that certain real property located at the northwest corner of Lanell Lane and Whitewood Road, Riverside County, California, 8:00 p.m., 392-290-048. City's real property negotiator, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, City Attorney seeking direction from the City Council regarding price and terms of this property. City Council will also meet in CS2. You will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 to enable the City Council to consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiators regarding certain real property, Calmia and Jefferson intersection, 8:00 p.m., 906-080-041, 906-080-042, and 906-080-033, with Bold Communities, Fidels Advisors, and Urban Pacific and Chapoff. The city's real property negotiators is, again, the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Development Services Director, and City Attorney who will seek direction from City Council on price terms of the property. City Council will also conduct closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 to enable the city to consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiators regarding real property, Town Square Park Amphitheater, 11 Town Square Park, Marietta. Property negotiator, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Director of Economic Development, City Attorney will seek direction from the Council regarding price and terms for this property. City Council will also meet in CS4, anticipated litigation. You will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.94 because the city is considering whether to initiate litigation in five cases. And lastly, City Council will meet and conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B to continue the process for the future appointment of an employee to the position of the City Manager.
Thank you, City Clerk. With that, we're going to recess to closed session. We'll reconvene at 6:00 p.m. for the regular meeting. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 3 regular meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Attorney, please provide a report from closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council met in closed session on four agenda matters. The first was to confer with the real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 related to property on Lanell Lane and Whitewood Road. On this item, the Council was updated, no reportable action. The second item was also to confer with the real property negotiator pursuant to the same Government Code section, and this was on property at the intersection of Calmia and Jefferson. Again, on this item, the Council was updated, no reportable action. The third item was also to confer with the real property negotiator pursuant to the same Government Code section, and this related to 11 Town Square Park. On this item, the Council was updated, no reportable action. The fourth item was regarding anticipated litigation, and this item, the Council authorized the initiation of litigation in five cases related to code enforcement cases. The cases are as follows: 39651-Corte Gata, 25040-Avenida Sombra, 24721-Four Street, 29184-Via Princesa, and 24412-Kentucky Derby Drive. The Council unanimously authorized litigation on all of those matters. And the last item was a public employee appointment matter regarding the future appointment of an employee to the position of City Manager. In this item, the City Council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, can you please call roll call to determine a quorum, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember De Forest.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember De Forest. Remain standing for the invocation led by Pastor Larry Hanson from Marietta Calvary Chapel. Thank you, Mayor. Everyone place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If you'll bow your hearts and your heads with me, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we gather before you with thankful hearts for this opportunity to serve our community of Marietta. We lift up Mayor Stone and the City Council members and all the leaders who work tirelessly to guide our city. Lord, we ask you for wisdom as they strive to keep our city safe through public safety measures, bless their efforts in pursuing economic growth that will benefit all who live and work here. Lord, help them maintain high-performing organizations that allow values for fiscal responsibility and transparency here. As they plan and build infrastructure for our future, give them the vision to create strong foundations for the generations to come. We also pray for their work in delivering community services, that they may always be responsive and compassionate, foster a spirit of connectivity and care for our city so that Marietta remains a place where everyone feels valued and engaged. Guide our leaders here tonight and always giving them strength and wisdom to make decisions that reflect your love and grace. We pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Hanson. Moving on to presentations, we have a proclamation for National Kids with Cancer Awareness Month. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Unfortunately, we did receive, we were contacted by Ms. Lenhart, and due to unforeseen circumstances, she's unable to attend. So if you'd like to maybe read the proclamation and then we can properly deliver it?
Yes, ma'am. We will definitely make sure that the National Kids with Cancer Awareness Month affiliation receives their proclamation. National Kids with Cancer Awareness Month, whereas September is National Kids with Cancer Awareness Month, and all children regardless of who they are deserve childhood and a chance to grow up. And whereas during National Kids Cancer Awareness Month, we honor the absolute courage of the tens of thousands of children who fight cancer every day and all of the loved ones who support them. And whereas the National Kids with Cancer Awareness Month serves to increase awareness of childhood cancer, including the need for early detection, proper treatment, research, and attention to late-term effects of treatment on childhood cancer survivors. Now, therefore, let it be known on behalf of the entire City Council of the city of Marietta, we hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Kids with Cancer Awareness Month, this day dated, 3rd day of September 2024. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion from Councilmember De Forest, a second from Councilmember Holliday. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Great. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to City Manager Administrative Update, the City Manager Administrative Updates is an opportunity for the City Manager to provide community updates as well as department or commission announcement on current or upcoming projects. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Our first presentation is our Director of Community Services, Brian Ambrose, and he's going to give you an update on the pool and the youth center.
Good evening, City Council. What I'm going to do is get out of the way real quick. I just wanted to introduce you to two of my superstar employees, Victor Patina and Lisette Lagounis. You've probably seen them running around at the Father's Day Car Show, Birthday Bash, Santa Stars, anything to do with youth programming, anything to do with the pool, anything to do with sports fields reservations, all flow through them. So with that, I'm going to make a big splash in the words of Kristen Crane to give an update on the pool.
So Lisette's going to help me with the clicker, so I'll pay attention. So good evening, mayors, councilmembers, and city staff. So I'm pleased today to give you an update for their summer youth and aquatics programs. And I'll start with the youth center. That's deep in my heart. So for the 2425 school year, we set our registration fees for $31.29 according to the new fee schedule, and we extended our hours to include early morning programming from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Monday through Friday with no extra cost. We're averaging about 104 daily check-ins, and our enrollment keeps growing every year. I did provide some analytics here, and you can see here, right now we're at 222 enrollments for the 2425 semester, and with an expected total of at least 352 by the end of the school year, which is reflecting of a 31.6% average increase every year from that. Are youth centers thriving? We are successfully hosting nine clubs that includes anything from Legos to book clubs to yearbooks to STEM to sports, you name it. It provides the youth an available opportunity to learn and connect with their peers, and all that is led and imagined by our amazing CSD staff. And now, summer camps. Our summer camps are, were a complete success this year. Our first, for our first time, we offered nine weeks of extended day camps at the youth center, running from June to August. The camps operated from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., serving four different age groups, from five to 12-year-olds. Registrations were set at $160 per child per week, and we also offered multi-sibling discounts at $15 per child. These camps were packed with engaging activities, and we introduced walking excursions, which are a little learning curve, but we took them to local attractions like Mulligans, Bolero, theaters, and Mindtrap escape rooms. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive, and the success of our camps reflect the hard work of our team. So we did provide some analytics up here of our registration. We did have 443 registrations, or kids register for our camps through the summer, and we did collect $55,000 after expenses for our total camps. So it was a big hit throughout the city. Now our beloved aquatics program. After the Calloks Sports Park pool was closed, we ensured that our summer programs would continue with no interruption. So through our partnership with the Marietta Valley Unified School District, we hosted all our programs from Vista Marietta High School. We offer swim lessons, lap swim, water exercise, and public swim that ran from June to September 28. The admissions did range anything from $1 to $5 for daily entries, and then we did offer punch passes that were $20 for residents and $40 for non-residents. Programs are limited after August 10 due to the availability of school being back and the pool's availability. But I am proud to say that transition was a renowned success. Our partnership with the school district was flourishing, and we are grateful for the working relationship that we have with the school district. In our collaboration with our vendor Swan Aquatics, who was our lifeguard vendors, we created a smooth and effective partnership. And then we did provide some analytics up here, so you can tell. I did provide the 22 Calloks, which was the last time it was open, and I provided the 2024 Vista analytics up here so you could see. We did have across the board 432 registered swimming lessons this year, and a total of 1,843 residents came to the pool this summer. So overall, it was a great success. So in summary, youth center and summer programs thrive this year, and thanks to your guys' support. And I'm sweating crazy up here, but have questions up here, and let me know if you have any questions. It's like Michael Jordan in the fourth quarter over here.
Any questions, Council?
Take the box. Next, we have our director.
Thank you very much.
Our Director of Development Services, David Chantaurant-Sue, who's going to give you a multifamily housing update.
So actually, okay, it's on, great. Good evening, Council. I've been asked to give you an update on the development activity specifically pertaining to multifamily housing. There's been a lot of chatter in the community about it. Obviously, there's a lot going on. So just before I start, all the information that I'm going to present is available on the city's planning website. So under Development Services, that's the main department webpage, and then one more click to Planning, and there's a lot of the background information I'm about to present. So just to give you a little context, as you all know, we prepare a housing plan every eight years, which is mandated by state law, and it's called the Housing Element. It's part of our general plan. Every city and county in this state is required to have both a general plan and an updated housing element. So the main purpose of the Housing Element is to identify locations within the city that can accommodate housing. The state requires cities to not only plan for what I would call market-rate housing, but also affordable housing or workforce housing, as it's been referred to. So currently, we have about 2,000 units under construction. I know it's a big number, and then if you recall, you know, we've had a very long environment of low interest rate, and so that facilitated a lot of construction projects, including what we're seeing. The good news, of course, is that interest rate environment is over, and so we're starting to see a slowdown in development activity for multifamily. However, we do have many units within our pipeline, and we're obligated by state law to work through those. So we've kind of seen the first wave. These were projects that were probably entitled in 2019, 2020 during the COVID period. It takes about two to three years for a project to kind of work its way through the environmental review process and the city's review process. And so we've had about 1,000 units that are about ready to open, with another 1,000 units that are probably at some point in the next 12 months going to be there as well. And then we have roughly about 6,000 additional units in our pipeline. These include single-family, multifamily, for-rent ownership approaches as well. And again, it's something that's going to be happening in the community over the next, you know, several years. So you might be asking why this sudden boom in housing. I mentioned the interest rates. The other very significant items that happened, for lack of a better term, so the state began to really ratchet down on housing laws that affected local cities like Marietta. Two primary laws were known as SB 330 or the Housing Crisis Act, and there's also the Housing Accountability Act. I mean, in short, those two pieces of legislation, along with dozens of others, made it essentially impossible for cities to say no to housing if they were being proposed in areas where zoning allowed them, or if there were essentially no negative impacts to the environment. So with those types of things, I'm talking about impacts to protected species, you know, rare threatened plant animals, or even cultural resources. So the state began to remove all the roadblocks that city would typically use to say no to housing, and they've made it almost impossible to say no, as I've indicated. There's a $10,000 per unit fine if cities improperly deny a housing project. So where there used to be no penalties for denying housing projects, the state created penalties against cities if they denied housing projects. So the playing field is really slanted toward the development community, and some people may say, "That's great, we need more housing." But, you know, the counterbalance of that is our residents are seeing the impact of that with more traffic and et cetera. So with that, I just wanted to reiterate that all the projects that we're actively working on are located and on our new interactive GIS website, which is located again on the Development Services webpage. Click on Development Services, and it'll take you right to the map. And then again, if you click down one more level to the Planning Department webpage, we have a summary of the housing laws that are being impacted that we're experiencing. So with that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is that fine $10,000 per door per day?
It's just a per unit.
So just per unit, so it's a one-time fine?
Correct.
So a 200-unit complex would be a $2 million one-time fine?
You're an accountant. I don't do math after 5 o'clock, so I'm going to believe you.
Still pretty hefty fine.
It is a significant fine.
And for some of our larger projects, obviously, it would be even more substantial. The environmental impacts.
Yes.
They removed a bunch of things that were normally considered environmental impacts, correct?
They did. I think one of the most significant ones that people may still associate with projects is traffic. So the state decided, I think it was 2011 or 2012, that traffic was no longer an environmental impact.
But it is an impact to our residents.
It is an impact to the quality of life, for sure.
And how much does the state give us to combat those impacts?
Well, it's very localized. You know, for example, for cities that have, or counties that have gas tax funds, they typically use gas tax funds to fund transportation improvements. In Riverside County, we also have the Uniform Traffic Mitigation Fee, which can also be paid to fund traffic improvements.
But those aren't fees, those aren't new fees the state gave us when they removed. The traffic is considered as an impact, true?
Correct, yeah.
Those are fees that we already had to do normal things, not the excess that the state is imposing upon us.
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember De Forest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been getting a lot of emails, of course, on, you know, all the housing that's coming in. Could you describe the relationship between the school district and the city with respect to kids in school and the increase in our number of units, and if that's something that the city does anything about?
Certainly, and that's a great question. So we have a staff relationship with the school district, and so we've made them aware of the development increased activity that we're experiencing, and they actually appreciated having the live interactive GIS map. So it makes them more aware of where projects are happening and how many units are being included. It's really up to the school district to work with a developer to provide, for example, an additional school site. They've had conversations with at least one developer who's looking to possibly donate land. And, you know, the state, one thing that they did, and this has been, you know, decades now, the state only requires the payment of fees for the mitigation of any impacts from new housing projects on schools. And so the school district, I think, has been active in reaching out with the development community and trying to figure out what can they do in addition to just the payment of fees, and trying to acquire school sites on development projects is one of those. Of course, they have to be larger school development project sites.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. MPT Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you let us tell the public what the difference is between affordable and non-affordable? Because there's a misconception that affordable is all Section 8, and I do not believe that that is the case.
Yeah, that's a great question as well. It is not Section 8 housing. So Section 8 refers to a voucher that somebody would receive, you know, from the county typically, and then give that to a landlord, and the landlord would then provide them with housing at an affordable level, if you will. So market-rate housing is just whatever the market is going to charge somebody for rent. You go to one of the new complexes that are opening here, for example, and you strike a deal with a landlord, and that's market-rate housing. One of the elements of the city's housing element is that we have to accommodate a certain affordability level. And so those are established by state law, and so in Riverside County, I don't have any numbers with me, but we look at moderate income, which is typically 80% of what the county average income is. You also have low income, which is 30% to 60% of the county average income, and then also then you get into very low categories. So with affordable housing, typically there's got to be a government funding source affiliated with that. Typically, those are provided by the state and the county, and the affordable housing developers, they work with their prospective tenants, and they have to have a job. They have to, they cannot make more than whatever the county limit is, and then it varies by the number of people within the household. I'm not sure if that data is on our website, but it's easy enough to find on a Google search if you look at Riverside County affordability, you know, limits.
And it's up to the owners of the property to maintain that credibility with the tenant, that they maintain having a job. I mean, it's up to them to watch out for that, correct?
Yeah, typically, they go through an audit, auditing process once a year where they verify income, they prove that they have a job, that they can make rent payments, and so there's an ongoing process that the landlord's engaged in with the tenant.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Thank you. On Ms. Warren's question there, the Section 8, is there also a clause about felons can't qualify for Section 8?
You know, I'm not aware of that specific provision. I'm not sure, it's a county program, and I'm not sure what their requirements are.
I thought I remembered that, but I'm not sure. But thank you. Now, you referenced what you're seeing built now was probably approved sometime in 2019, just to reference. None of us were up here at that time. I was actually on planning commission then, and I remember having these discussions. There weren't a whole lot of mechanisms to push back on these things, as you mentioned.
Right.
That did not exist back then either, I assume?
Right. The Housing Accountability Act actually has been around, I think, since the 80s, if I recall, but the state has really put more teeth into the legislation, and so it has made cities more accountable. With the Housing Crisis Act, that's more recent. There's a slew of other bills that have been essentially passed since probably 2014, 2015, and every year the state finds more and more local control that it claws away from cities and prevents, you know, cities from doing what it might otherwise prefer to do with housing.
That was kind of my point, I guess, is you don't see it getting any better in terms of us getting more control of that type of decision process.
I do not see that trend. That trend is going to keep continuing on to make, it's more difficult for cities to say no to housing projects.
Yeah, okay. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chantaurant-Sue, there is SB 1037. Are you familiar with that by Senator Weiner?
I am not specifically.
So he's proposing an additional upwards of $50,000 a month for fines for cities. Listen, I want to just ask you a quick question before I go on to my statement, just so there's clarification. When, I'm going to use, Councilmember Holliday is bringing forward a project, he's got to go through the SEQA process, correct? But when it comes to affordable housing, they don't have to go through the SEQA process, correct?
So that's one of the slew of state housing bills that I mentioned. They're creating more and more carve-outs for affordable housing projects to avoid SEQA.
Correct, which is an unfair advantage, in my opinion. And unfortunately, with the high-density development that's coming to Marietta, that's impacting major traffic congestion. It's impacting our schools because our schools are full now, and what are we going to do with the excess students? We have to hire additional public safety for the approximate of 30,000 extra thousand people that are coming to Marietta, and right now we have a $7.4 million deficit. So where I'm going with this is I am working with CalCities right now, and I am hoping that we will bring forward a class action lawsuit against the state of California with regards to SEQA. I cannot promise anything is going to come to fruition from this, but what you have in me is you have a fighter, and I'm willing to work with our agencies such as CalCities to figure out a way how we can all come together, because every single city in the state of California is being impacted by this, and the policies, the rules, ordinances, and the laws are not fair to all concerned. And so I want to thank you for educating our guests here today a little bit about the process. I still want to fight. I do believe that there's something to fight for, and it is about quality of life here in Marietta.
Lord.
Yes.
I got one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt. The Section 8 question I asked, she did, Ms. Israel did pull it up. It does not allow sex offenders.
In the microphone, please.
It does not allow sex offenders, drug traffickers. It does not allow sex offenders, drug traffickers, some fraud, and violent crimes to be living in Section 8, so.
Appreciate the clarification.
We're not done. Councilmember Holliday has another question.
Yeah, sorry, David. Actually, this question isn't for you, so this is for our Madam City Attorney. In a conversation I had recently with a resident was asking, what if the city justified the state? Can you talk about what that might look like?
Sure. Two cities that I'm familiar with have defied the state, Huntington Beach and Beverly Hills. And they both got swift action from the Attorney General's Office litigation against them. And Beverly Hills was ordered to not issue any building permits of any type. So that means anyone remodeling their home, any business that wants to do tenant improvements, no business permits of any type were allowed to be issued until they started doing what the state legislation directed them to do.
And if they defied that court order?
You know, that's an interesting question. I don't know what would happen because in both cases, they started complying. I don't know what a court would do to hold a city possibly in contempt if they continued to fight.
But it could constitute jail time for somebody.
Maybe.
Mayor.
Listen, if CalCities is able to get the majority of the cities on board to do a class action lawsuit, especially with regards to CEQA, we may have a chance. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but at least I'm asking the questions and I'm challenging those agencies to assist us and help us in any way we possibly can.
And if that's not successful, and I support that 100%, maybe we should look at creating our own proposition, get it on the ballot to overturn some of the nonsense the state has done, because I think there'd be a lot of people that would vote for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren, you are in the queue. Is that an old one? Okay, great. Mr. Shontarantu, thank you so much for your report.
And finally, our, the city PIO, we're gonna bring up Christina Davies, and she's going to give her community report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. So on a different note, I'm gonna talk about what's happening in Marietta, some of the fun stuff. But first, let's talk about the weather. You know, I like to get up here every once in a while and talk about the weather. So the National Weather Service has issued an excessive heat warning starting tomorrow, late morning into Friday. So that's September 6th, and that's because we're gonna be seeing highs 103 to 108. So it's gonna be very hot out there. So if people listening online, people here, please try to stay indoors. Drink water, stay hydrated. And I also want to point out that we do have an official cooling center, and that's gonna be our senior center. It is for people 50 and up, and that's at 5 Town Square. But we also have our Marietta Public Library as an area for people to cool off, and that's at 8 Town Square. Next, just a couple events happening. Marietta Market Nights, that's gonna be on September 5th and 19th from 5 to 9. Of course, it's gonna be in downtown Marietta. Again, it's gonna be hot, though, this week, so just be mindful of that, and don't forget to drink the water, stay hydrated. We have our 9/11 tribute ceremony, and that's gonna be on Wednesday, September 11 at 5:30. Again, it's gonna be at Town Square Park. Next, this is always a popular event, but we have our bulky item drop-off and paper shredding event. A lot of people always ask what is accepted and what is not. That is such a long list. So I have it up on the calendar of events, and there's a couple places you can find this on our website. If you visit marietascadot.gov, on our main page, just scroll down and hit the Events tab. You can find it there. Or you can go to marietascadot.gov/calender. And so for the month of September, it will be on the calendar, and that's gonna be September 28th from 8 to 12 p.m. This will also be on social media, so you guys can share this with all the residents in Marietta. You do have to be a Marietta resident for this specific event. But I think what's important is the what's accepted and not accepted. And as always, I like to say, well, we're gonna stay connected. So for the newsletter, social media, any of those updates, and you want to sign up, you can go to marietascadot.gov/connect. Any questions?
Christina, with regards to the shredding, is this the last one for the year? We have another one before the end of the year.
This will be the last one for the end of the year. And then there'll be one at the beginning, should be one at the beginning of the year, next year, 2025.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you. Oh, yes, yes, sir.
If you could tell my wife I don't qualify for the bulky item drop-off, that'd be great.
I honestly have no idea what to say to that, so. If you're listening, Ms. Lavelle.
And that concludes our announcements.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Moving on to Governing Body Commission Committee Board Reports. Governing Body Reports is an opportunity for council to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, commissions, committees, and board meeting attendance. Reports shall not exceed three minutes. Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along with all of my colleagues, I attended the City Council's special meeting regarding the future appointment of an employee to a position of city manager. And that is all that I have to report out, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Lavelle.
Just reporting the same meeting that Councilwoman DeForest just mentioned.
Thank you. Councilmember Holliday.
And for me, turn on my microphone. And for me, in addition to that meeting, I also had a Santa Stop meeting. We're meeting every two weeks now to make sure we're prepared for this year's event. So we're gonna be pushing out information soon about those that want to get involved. Volunteers need to be live-scanned, but if they were live-scanned last year, they do not need to be live-scanned again. So that hopefully alleviates some of the issues, and we're looking at some new creative things to do with the program this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. Besides the meeting that we all attended, I also attended the Riverside Transit Agencies called the RTA meeting, Commission meeting, where I'm reporting out, it was on the 22nd of August. Ridership was down 9% in June, however, for the fiscal year, total ridership is up 9.7%. Youth rides for free, youth ride free with RTA now through June 30th of 2025. So far, they have given over 59,000 free rides to Riverside County youths. They are, the Board of Directors authorized staff to award a hydrogen fueling station project for clean energy. This project is slated to be completed by June of 2026. And the OMNI pilot program, so supportive, a program with autonomous vehicle, is going to be a pilot program in downtown Riverside, and it's a two-year pilot, and it will kick off in early 2025. I also attended the Teen Now meeting, and at this time, there was nothing to report out. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, MPT Warren. And I also attended the special meeting for our city manager as well. That concludes my Governing Body Commission and Board Reports. Moving on to public comments, this is for non-agenda items only. Any person may address a governing bodies on any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies or any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Requests for more time must be made to the city clerk with a timing limit to a maximum of six minutes. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Amy Edworth.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, and community. I've always believed that the heart of any project lies in the people who support it, and that's never been more true than with the Marietta Train Project and Pearl Center for Creative Arts. You see, my love for this community and for this project has driven me to seek the opinions, advice, and support of those who share a deep fondness for our local history. And it's with immense gratitude that I stand before you tonight to acknowledge the incredible support we've received, not just from Marietta, but from our neighboring cities and beyond. Because, come on, we all love trains and agree a local train landmark would be extremely cool. If you agree, just stay silent at the end of this speech. Wink, wink. So while there are too many names to rattle off in just three minutes, I'd like to give a heartfelt thank you to two of them, Mayor Stu and Mayor Moore of Temecula and Wildamar, respectively. Mayor Stu, with his charismatic enthusiasm, told me he wishes I could park our train right outside his office. With their support, along with the excitement from residents of these cities, it's shown that Marietta Train Project is a vision shared across our region. With all this support, it's not uncommon for people to ask, Amy, why don't you just put your train somewhere else? And I admit, there are moments when I wonder if that would be easier. But every time I consider it, I realize that my determination to keep this project in Marietta is about more than just convenience or sheer stubbornness. It's about giving back to my community, where I graduated high school, where I'm raising my four children, and where I see an important need not being met in my very own backyard. Sure, I could take this project somewhere else, but I want to do it in Marietta, the city that shaped who I am and continues to do so. That's why I'm standing here tonight, asking for your support, not just in spirit, but in action. We have a location for our train offered to us in Marietta, and when the time comes to seek permits and other approvals to place our train car there, I would love to have you all as my allies, and I hope I can count on your support for this overall project and plan. I also want to thank and recognize the support of Third County District Supervisor Chuck Washington for awarding us another Community Improvement Designation Grant, a signal that what we're building resonates deeply within our community and the county's overarching goals. And in closing, I invite you to join us for our spooky steampunk tea party on Saturday, October 5th, from 1 to 4 p.m. in La Cresta. It's not just a fundraiser, but a real celebration of our community's spirit and diversity, a gathering where we honor the different ways cultures commemorate their ancestors, where we remember, celebrate, and connect. I understand how busy schedules can get, but your presence at these events means so much, not just to me, but to our entire community, and I'd love to see you join us in person. Together, we will bring a train to Marietta and create a place where history and art come to life and where we can all be connected by community. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to Consent Calendar Approval Items 1 through 14. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. Are there any requests from the City Council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstain from voting? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a consent calendar item?
Seeing none.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I need a motion and a second, please. I have a motion by Councilmember Holliday, a second by Councilmember DeForest. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, Madam Mayor, and that's with the inclusion of introduction and of the first reading of Ordinance Number 609-24, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marietta adopting by reference Chapter 8.36 of Title 8 of the County of Riverside County Code as a new chapter in the Marietta Municipal Code.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to public hearing, Item Number 15, Public Hearing Continuance, Six Code Update, MCA-2023-00003, revising and updating the city's development and municipal codes. Staff, may we please have a report? Thank you, Mr. Jarrett.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. For the Six Code Update, we'll be asking for a continuance request to the 17th, and we'll be bringing that back then. And so I'll be covering the next item that's on your agenda.
Thank you so much. We will bring it back for council questions. Seeing no questions, we will open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public testimony?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Closed. Call for a motion a second to continue the public hearing to a date certain of September 17, 2024. We have a motion from MPT Warren and a second from Councilmember Holliday. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to discussion, Item Number 16, Los Alamos Sports Park Soccer Project, Amendment Number 1 to agreement with Glenn Lucas Associates Incorporated, and Amendment Number 1 to agreement with Rick. Hello, Mr. Jarrett.
Well, good evening again, Mayor and City Council members and my city manager. I'm Jarrett Rameau with the Development Services Department. We're here this evening to present to you the Los Alamos Sports Park Phase 2 project, and I'll get into the Glenn Lucas request and the Rick Engineering. To familiarize ourselves where we're at, on the left-handier screen is an aerial view. If you can see where Whitewood Road and Ruth Ellen Way and the existing Los Alamos Sports Park Project. So you see the built complex in the southern part of the photo. And to the north, where you see the arrows, that's generally where you'll see that. For reference, our recent Los Alamos fire is on the right-hand side in red. That fire did not touch any of the area that we're talking about. But just for reference, I know that some folks were asking about the location of that fire and the proximity to the site. Here's a closer view of the project site. Again, this is north of our existing Los Alamos Center. The arrow is pointed towards a home that is used by our CSD staff. And to the north of that, we operate that with some amendments and some landscaping areas. This is a draft perspective of the soccer project. What you see with the little soccer balls, that's seven soccer fields that we feel that we can fit on the site. In purple are parking areas. And a lot of the area that would have to be placed into open space, and I'll get into the reasons for that. A lot of colors on this map, but it shows that there's a very sensitive vegetation in the site, which makes sense. It's in an area that was described and proposed for conservation. With that, we have a lot of plants that then yield species. We have a number of species that we've already surveyed for. Most recently, about two months ago, we were alerted that there's another species coming online. So we did a survey for the crutches bumblebee, found it, and it's there. And so I think we're done with the survey aspect of it. We've been doing that for a few years. But this information is very important for the next steps with the agencies. So we've been working with the Marietta Soccer Academy for a number of years on this project. Biological got in the way, if you will, and so we're gonna have to spend some time with the agencies. This would be a criteria refinement application, also an incidental take permit. That's a permit necessary because we have the crutches bumblebee. And then there's some other 401 and 1601 or 1602 federal permits that we'll have to work through. So these are the agencies or governments, regional, state, and federal, that we'll have to be working with, and that's why I'm here tonight. In order to get the support to apply for these applications and get through the process, we're gonna have to use two consultants. One is Glenn Lucas and Associates. They do work very, very closely on criteria refinement applications and with agency staff. Because we also need a survey, a grading plan, a drainage study, and some other technical studies, we will need to enlist Rick, which used to be Rick Engineering. We have an existing on-call contract with them, and so we're gonna ask for an amendment to that. And with that, council, our recommendation tonight, based on those two contracts, is to approve an amendment to the agreement with Glenn Lucas and Associates, approve an amendment to the agreement with Rick, and then authorize the city manager to execute both amendments. And with that, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you very much, Jarrett. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the report, Jarrett. Do you know what the time, expected timeframe is for the criteria refinement?
It's 24 months or less. That's what we've worked with the agencies on, on their own schedule. So 24 months is the worst-case scenario.
What do you expect it to be?
18 to 24.
18 to 24. All right, thank you.
Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Looking at all the environmentals and all of the species on your list, is this even a possibility? Is this something that we can work through? Or is this? I mean, I know community outreach for soccer fields is huge, but is this something that we can get through?
I believe it is. It's just gonna be a lot more difficult than we ever thought. It's very common to find a balance between biology and development. We do it on a lot of our projects. This one has a little bit more complexity. It will take a lot more analysis than necessary. But after the conversations we've had with the agencies, given the work that we've already demonstrated and the work that we will get into very shortly, I believe that there could be a positive sunset. into very shortly, I believe that there could be a positive sunset to this project, meaning that these are developable lands. The agencies have known that for 20 years. We told them all along that this is for a sports project. Back in the day, they told us that the gnat catcher and the keynote checker-spout butterfly would not delay the project, meaning it wouldn't be a reason for it to be denied. Although we have additional species that have been identified on the site, we're showing avoidance for most of them through fencing and other things, and will also mitigate off-site. So I believe after all of that work and effort and money, I believe that there would be a positive outcome. But that's literally why we're here. We want to make sure that we put in the good work, the hard work, to get a positive outcome.
With that positive outcome, I'm sure financially, what are we looking at per field? We're adding, you know, six fields, seven fields, going across... What is our cost per field? And could we not spend our money somewhere? I know we own the property. I know development could go there. It is a developmental piece of property, but, I mean, realistically, or advantageously, would we want to just purchase something else? And...
Yeah, I'm currently following the direction of pursuing this. I think at the end of the day, though, no matter what project we may pursue, we'll still have to get agency permits and grade it. This is land the city owns. The land should be used for recreational purposes or something else. I believe that regardless of the purpose of looking at specific fields, we do want to make sure we get to the finish line and get our recreation, our Los Alamos Phase Two, permitted. We need to get through these permits to grade the property so that we can construct, but if the question is, why this, why now, that's opportune for more conversations with council. But I think that in the end of the day, we need this land for our residents, and I think we should finish the process from what I've been directed to do to make sure that we can get a grading permit from the agencies.
And if we put this process on hold, I know with other projects that have come forward, the environmentals are only getting worse, now that we have the crotchless bumblebee. So... Or what?
Crotches was the... It was the gentleman that I believe mapped the species. There was three bumblebees, and that was one of them, so...
I just realized what I said. Oh, my lord!
There's also the Franklin bumblebee.
The bumblebee. Oh, my goodness. Okay, so, yes. Yeah, all right. Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. MPT Warren.
Thank you. I'm trying to stop laughing here. My apologies. I just wanted, for full disclosure, to let everybody know that I am proudly an assistant soccer coach for the Marietta Youth Soccer League, and there is no conflict with me voting on this item. Thank you.
Councilmember Lavelle.
I've never played soccer. The... Am I correct to understand that to do anything with this property, you have... we have to go through this process, anything other than letting it be raw land?
In order to get a grading permit, we have to get certain permits from the agencies, so yes, we would have to go through this process.
And so the process we're talking about now for the outside companies to do for us or with us, it would not be specific to a soccer use if that were to make it to the finish line, correct?
The sequel analysis would include a project description. The current project description includes seven fields. We do plan for these at worst-case scenario, so if there were changes later on that were still consistent with impacts, like lighting, noise, if you look at it at worst-case scenario, then you can reprogram some of those uses.
And so you're saying that it could be retooled for another type of recreational use? I referenced the tennis court pickleball thing. Like, I'd hate to have a bunch of tennis courts when we really need pickleball courts in 15 years.
And so with pickleball, the noise is the most impactful, if you will. So as long as the project had anticipated that noise or provided like noise walls, things like that, something that's fairly easy to do, we could work within that changed project description.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'm going to ask a few questions, but I've requested something from our assistant city manager, and she's going to provide me...
Yeah, Madam Mayor and council, I do have your list of questions, and I think it might also be helpful just to get a little context on the conceptual partnership that we've pursued with Marietta Soccer Academy. Question came up about financing and some other things. Since at least 2018, we've been working with them on the concept of building some additional soccer fields and perhaps other amenities. At some point, that included a stadium-like structure. I think that's since been taken out of the plan, but the intent all along was that Marietta Soccer as a financial partner would both take a management role but also pay any debt services associated with these improvements. So that's still the concept we're working on. It's evolved over time, and for that reason, if and when we were clear of these environmental permits, we would certainly come back to council to revisit the vision of that build-out and make sure it was still appropriate, and to the point of the question of could it be other recreational amenities? If it turned out that at the time the demand was less or council pursued another vision, we could certainly do that at that time. So let's see here. Questions?
While you're looking that up, what is the cost of us retaining these two companies?
Tonight's action is about $470,000.
Okay. Justin, you know, thank you so much for proceeding with my questions, but I'm not going to ask any questions. I'm just going to go into my comments. So this development was proposed since 2018, and here we are in 2024. Sadly for us, this vision was amazing, and I think that the concept would have really put Marietta on the map because one of our goals is to be a city of recreation. And this project, not due to our fault, but actually due to environmentalists, has halted this project. We have a $7.4 million deficit. We only need seven fields. And being that the concept right now, my understanding is that the partnership from the company is no longer viable. And so we're looking at seven fields. To spend $470,000 right now with the possibility of this not even coming to fruition, we're going to spend $470,000 on something that's not even guaranteed. It's going to take two years to get through the process, and if we were to even get through the process, you're looking at about another two more years before we have fields. And I will tell you, our soccer industry, our youth, want fields today. So this is what I propose to my council, is that we have an ad hoc committee that works with staff to identify other properties in Marietta to accommodate seven fields. If we can't accommodate seven fields at one location, then let's break it up. You've got four here, and you've got three here. So my recommendation is not to move forward with this proposed project. If we were financially stable, okay, I could see maybe gambling the $470,000, but I'm not in a position today to gamble $470,000.
Madam Mayor, there is someone in the queue to speak. Did you see them?
Okay, but I still have an opportunity to speak along with the other council members.
Yes, but we haven't heard public comments.
Okay, am I not allowed to speak until after public comments?
But not give your...
Oh, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Sorry, I just didn't want you to go any further.
That's okay. Thank you so much. So anyways, now that I lost my... That's okay. That's fine. I believe that there are other venues available for our youth with minimal mitigation, which has to do with maybe repiping some water, putting maybe artificial grass down or putting real grass down, and having something for our youth to do by next year, instead of waiting another four years because we've been waiting since 2018. So that concludes my comments. We'll move on to public comments, and I... Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have Mr. Cassin Klein, and if it is the pleasure of the mayor, Amy Wedgeworth has also donated time for Mr. Klein, the maximum of six minutes.
Thank you. I want to start by complimenting Jarrett and Dennis and staff. I know how hard they've been working on this, and actually, several months ago, they held a workshop here where a lot of the families and MSA showed up, and so that was, I think, very helpful. And one of the comments that Jarrett made tonight was he was given direction, and yeah, that was back in 2018 from a different city council, and I spoke in support of that project, and what a wonderful concept that was. But that is not what we're looking at today. And I would offer that... I don't recognize anyone here that's even from MSA. So to me, that speaks volumes. So, you know, how strong is that partnership? I don't know. I question it. I question their commitment. Switching gears, you know, if this were a private developer, this deal would have not got past due diligence. And, you know, as evidence of that, a project developer that you all know, that I've spoken about, that I represent, had withdrawn their application because of similar situations in the city-owned Line F. So there's evidence there that why are we chasing this? Even, not even considering the deficit that we're facing here in the city. Councilmember DeForest, I think you're spot on with, you know, what is the price per field? What are we getting on the return? You know, one of the arguments that is made is, you know, we would like to have all the soccer fields in one location, and absolutely, but, you know, in my opinion, that's a luxury problem. And looking at the plan, those seven fields, in addition to what's out there, are not in the same location. There's different parking locations, and so we're not even achieving that with this through no fault of staff or MSA. It's just, it's about the environmental constraints, and it's stuff that we're dealing with. I would say and suggest that, as Mayor Stone, you suggested, that we take an inventory of our current parks, not even other properties that the city owns. But I know one because I lived over off of Morning Dove, and Valley Vista Park was right behind the house that I was at. And I know that the soccer practices there, as does baseball. There's a huge greenbelt, but it's not flat, and with some minor grading and some rerouting of irrigation, we definitely could get one field, possibly two fields. Now, when I've mentioned that before, the objection has been, well, the neighbors don't want to hear the kids, or there's going to be parking. Well, you know what? You bought next to a park, and you're hearing the kids now. Over off of Mountain Pride, where we have the disc golf, you go over there on a weekend, and you look at the parking, it's incredible in the neighborhood. So, you know, those are all things that those residents are going to have to deal with, and frankly, that you guys are going to have to be ready to get the criticism if that's what you decide to do. But I believe that we have, of the 53 parks that we have, there's got to be room to where we can get some more soccer fields to accommodate the demand for soccer. And at some point, you've got to cut your losses, and we're never going to get Phase Two of Los Alamos Hills Sports Park of what it was designed to be. And I happen to believe that had this been proposed to the council in 2018, that they would have never embarked on this, because this is nowhere near, nowhere near what we thought it was going to be. Finally, Mayor Stone, you asked, you know, what is this contract? What I'm curious about is, aside from staff time, and I'm not discounting what we've spent with staff time, that's significant, but, you know, that's difficult or challenging to quantify. What is the total cost that we have spent on consultants? You know, what is the dollar? So I think if we're not going to cancel this completely, that we maybe need to push pause and go back and look at where have we been at and where are we going, and what's the bottom line? What's it going to be? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Madam City Clerk.
That concludes public comments. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. We will bring this back for discussion. Councilmember Lavelle.
I also want to agree, I guess, with the speaker's comments of, I do believe that when this was proposed in 2018, if it had been this complex and this expensive even to get to this point, it probably would have not been a priority, or, and/or, they probably would have looked at a different location throughout the city. I mean, with the timeline and the cost already, I would assume, you know, someone in the private sector could move faster and make something happen, but I agree, like, there seems to be a lot of constraints on this. So that's it. I guess I just wanted to voice that.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I ask a clarifying question first, if I could, Jarrett? Moving forward with the agencies and getting this permitted to grade, doesn't have to be tired soccer fields, correct?
No.
Okay. I think we really need to look at this in two steps. One, do we ever want to develop Los Alamos Phase Two? That's really the question before us today, because that's what this accomplishes. To give some of you some background that may not have been around or aware of what was going back in the... Do you know when the city bought that property? 2002?
Around that time. I don't have the number.
Yeah. So this was a deal we worked out with Transpac Development back in the day because the land had habitat on it then. And we worked with the agencies at that time, and we proposed the Los Alamos Hills Sports Park. In fact, I think the house that you guys currently use was his personal residence from back then. And at the time, we had an agreement that the land we mitigated, which was substantial, was all that was needed. Of course, that was back in the day that you didn't have digital copies of things, and we have been unable to find that agreement today to say, no, we've already done everything you asked us to. And so now we're subject to what their whims and desires are today. And I agree with Councilmember DeForest that waiting another five years is only going to make it worse. We're never going to be able to develop that project to do anything, and the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. So the question I feel that is before us isn't do we go forward with a soccer program? That's one option. We could do a myriad of things there that might make more sense than the soccer program. Yes, they may partner, they may pay for some of the costs. All that's for, in my opinion, is a different discussion. Discussion is, should we move forward today with going with what the agencies have said they would accept, do a criteria refinement, and be able to have use of that land, or potentially forever just leave it fallow? That's my opinion of what is in front of us today, not the soccer complex. And I, for one, the city owns that land. We should do something with it. It should benefit the residents. We shouldn't have paid what we paid for that land, just have it sit there and do nothing. So I would encourage us to move forward with the criteria refinement and the consultants. Javier, do you have information on the affordability of the consultants for us in our current budget?
Good evening. So when we look at this report and looking at the current agreements that we have and the current budget, we were able to find some of the budget that we already have approved by UO Council as part of the mid-year update. So in essence, we're kind of reallocating some of the budget that we had existing for other services to this one.
So this would not increase any deficit?
Correct.
Thank you. So I would encourage my colleagues to look at the question that truly is before us, and that is, do we want to have something on Los Alamos Hills Phase Two, or do we want to just leave it vacant land, potentially forever? Thank you.
MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur kind of across the board. I think we need to look at this further. I understand why they would want soccer fields. It's a convenience for parents, especially if you have three or four kids playing soccer and you're running from here to there. I understand that, but right now, five years down the road, four years down the road, we need them now. And we... And waiting for all of this doesn't help the situation we're in now. I, I think an ad hoc committee would be very good. It concerns me that MSA is not here. I mean, this is, this was their dream. This was their project. Why aren't they here? That concerns me. I would think that they would want to weigh in on this, especially this evening. Were they invited to the, to the council meeting?
Yeah, forgive me, I should have thought the...
May I? So they, they were not invited. And, and I'll take full accountability for it. This item was presented in the recent priority setting discussion as a Tier One project. And it was discussed moving forward with this. And it seemed at the time that it was kind of on track. And this was somewhat of a formality, we thought, given the budget funds available. And this being the next step that was outlined at that meeting. So we simply overlooked that this was going to necessitate a broader conversation.
Thank you. I appreciate that honesty. And I think we need more discussion on this. That's just my, my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, MPT Warren. Councilmember DeForest, is that an old?
No, it's a new.
It's new?
Yeah, please proceed. I, I think we have some facts to kind of go over. And I would agree with all of my colleagues as well. But it is a city property. Are we ever going to expand Los Alamos Sports Park Phase Two? Would we have to do this no matter what? And you said yes, correct, Jarrett? No matter what, to do anything on the property, we'd have to proceed to grading.
Yeah, if we want to put a project of any scale, yeah.
And we do agree that the environmental is getting worse with the addition of other species, which we will not name. And this piece of property would fall into the surplus land act. Is that correct? So for example, if we said, we're not going to do anything with it, we're going to sell it. So wouldn't that open up, what would that open up? To other things that could possibly go there?
If someone were to buy that, they would have to jump into a similar process. So that would come along with it. But the zoning is open space. And so there would be some limitations on what folks could do in that zone. But if an ad hoc committee was formed, those are the types of questions I think we can look at.
All right. If we form an ad hoc committee and wait, what, are we penalized if we take the next couple of months to figure out how to move forward on this?
No, there's no penalty. I think we'd want to sit down with all parties and explain how we got here and what the next steps are. I know that the consultant teams I work with are, they find this to be a very important project. And they would want to enlist themselves to any support they could. I know that all staff that I work with are, we want to make sure that we have healthy communities as part of our general plan and that people can recreate. I think that's the one thing that, it keeps coming back to us. So there's an affinity for sports in our community. And we just want to make sure that we're serving the type of zoning and the type of projects that our community deserves.
And I would completely agree with that, considering how many emails that I've had. It's not enough sports fields. Where's our kids going to play? You know, we can't drive constantly to different areas to play sports. So I would concur with that, too. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for giving me some extra time.
Sure, of course. Thank you. Councilmember DeForest, Councilmember, Councilmember Lavelle.
I have a question for you, Ms. Mayor. The ad hoc committee, if there seems to be consensus that this is almost a futile, you know, fight, the ad hoc committee would be determining what? Because if we, if we do move forward with the study and spend the, you know, upwards of $400,000, now we're going to sit on environmental documents that may or may not expire. I'm not, I don't, I'm not an expert, but I assume they're not indefinite when those decisions are made?
I mean, we have, we have months, if you will. But as each year goes past, more species could be listed. And you have to resurvey some of the previous survey results. So time will catch up with you. When I heard a few months, that, that can be incorporated. But it just tends to be a long-term situation, then.
Well, no, I'm referencing, let's say in two years, it, we got the clearance to, you know, put soccer fields and, you know, whatever on the property. Then we have a timeline to build? Or can that actually trigger a resurvey as well?
That's how we got here last time. So we, we want to build. And, and building is maintaining the property, right? You don't have to go vertical immediately. You put your telco, start putting in the fields, put the lighting up. I mean, that does take time. The construction phase would be one to two years, as Lisa had stated. But you want to keep that busy work. You don't want biology to re-encroach upon the property.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. My comment to, it sounds like you were going to lean towards a motion, would be to not do the ad hoc and bring this back when we're not at deficit.
No, that's not what I mean. But thank you for, for that. Madam Mayor? To, to, yes, ma'am.
Could I just maybe suggest, instead of ad hoc, maybe a workshop?
We can, let's talk about that. Councilmember Holliday brought, did bring up a very important part of this. That, you know, we, we're here to vote on whether we want to use these consultants to get us through the environmental process. And, and that's where my head is at. Now he just threw a curveball at all of us. And so now I'm thinking, now I'm thinking. So to answer your question, Councilmember Lavelle, I think we should do an ad hoc committee or, or even a workshop. But let me tell you why I think an ad hoc committee, Councilmember DeForest, is because we can dive into what Councilmember Holliday proposed. I need more information. I can tell by looking at MPT, she needs more information. And we don't want to make any quick decisions today because we don't want to do anything that could financially hurt our community, as you know. So I think having an ad hoc committee to bring that information back to us in more clarity, also with regards to utilizing other parks for soccer fields because there is a need, there is a want. And, and we need to provide that. And I don't want to wait another four more years. We can do it by next year. That would be great. So it's either a workshop or it's an ad hoc committee. And so it's, let's bring it back for consensus. What do you want to see happen? Councilmember Holliday, so you're in the queue.
I would propose that we, if we're not comfortable because we're not all up to speed on moving forward with the consultants today, that we form the ad hoc committee and that they have a time certain that they have to come back to council
Perfect, yes.
for that piece. But that it continues then to look at the sports field question, which is separate.
Correct. I...
That's what I propose.
There's your motion. I make that motion.
Clarifying, so your ad hoc committee would consist of, if you want to spend that money for the consultants, correct?
Yes, I'm ready to vote for that today. But if my colleagues want more time, I'm happy to give that to them.
Yes. I, I, I think your proposal is perfect with a time limit. I mean, we're in September. We can, you know, let's bring it back in December. Let's just give it three months.
Is that timeframe work for you, Jarrett? Or do you need it to be shorter?
Question? When I hear about an ad hoc committee, is that you forming it or is that staff?
Well, it'll be two council members with staff.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And I think, I think that's, you know, we're in the beginning of September, all of September, all of October and all of November. And bring it back for, Madam City Clerk, if it's okay, the first meeting in December.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So we would be bringing it back for reconsideration after the ad hoc committee had made their decision and what they find to be appropriate.
Correct. They would, they would bring it back for...
And it could be sooner.
It could be sooner, yes, or it could be sooner as well.
Not later than December?
Correct.
Does that timeframe affect the issues at all?
Not knowing how packed our agenda is this fall, I, I won't try to commit too early. But I myself would be, I'll do everything I can to prepare to bring back that in December. I think when I hear ad hoc subcommittee, I think we should form that very quickly and get that business underway because that can eat up some time. But yeah, whatever the direction is of city council, I'll, I'll respectfully do that.
I guess my question was, as, as far as the timeframe for the biology, that's not going to push us too far down the road.
We're talking about starting an application process with the agencies. They're in no rush. Our studies are up to date. I'll double check with our biologists. But I think if we resume in January, although that would be a concern of the parents, it is what it is. We'll have to come in with better information at that time.
Understood. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney, are we, are we allowed to make the motion with the ad hoc committee part of the motion? Or do we have to bring that back to formally?
The motion can say that you want to form a, an ad hoc, but actually forming the ad hoc needs to be on an agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification. Okay, so colleagues, I am going, I will second, so let's... Yes, so Councilmember Holliday, if you would state your motion.
I'm, my motion is to form an ad hoc committee to discuss the expenditure of funds for the consultants to be able to move forward with the grading of the property for whatever its purpose, future use is going to be, that to be determined later. And then subsequent to that decision, which must be done by the first meeting in December, that it would then continue on to look at our sports fields and bring back a recommendation to council on what the sports field situation is. Sorry, it's not more concise.
So I'm good. I do, Madam Mayor, whenever you have that motion in a second, can we do a verbal roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am. I need clarification from your motion, going back to the soccer fields. Can you repeat what, because it sounded like...
Except for whatever the use is going to be. And then the, after that, then the ad hoc committee would be looking at where else sports fields could go.
I think you should, the ad hoc committee should discuss it all. Let's discuss where...
You may need more time than three months.
I don't think so.
You think you can get it all done in three months? I'm happy with that. I was just giving you more time.
I think, I think you can get it all done in three months, Councilmember Holliday, yeah.
I'm not the one that's scared to speak.
I think, listen.
That's fine. I'm good.
If you need more time for the soccer fields, I, I don't think that you do. We can always extend it, but let's just make the motion for three months for both. Done? Done. Madam City Clerk, did I confuse you more?
You did, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So basically, what we're doing is we're going to include the, the ad hoc committee to determine the different parks where we can implement additional soccer fields. And being that Los Alamos Park has allocated seven fields, we're going to keep to that, that we will do our due diligence, to see if we can accommodate our seven fields to our respective 53 parks or 57 parks. Well, yeah, no, I'm just clarifying the... Right, okay. Got it?
And on September 17th, we'll be bringing back the ad hoc committee appointments? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then staff's recommendation is, we're not accept, you're not accepting that? You're, this is an amended recommendation. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can I go ahead and do a verbal?
And we have a motion by Councilmember Holliday, second by Mayor Stone. Please vote.
And if we, I just saw, I'm sorry, I just saw MPT with her hand raised.
I still have a question. When are we going to appoint the ad hoc committee?
Next, at the next council meeting.
We're going to do that on September 17th, is my understanding.
I didn't hear that. That's what I wanted to hear. Okay, thank you.
Please vote.
And, Madam Mayor, can I just do verbal roll call vote?
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Councilmember DeForest?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
No.
Councilmember Holliday?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries as amended for one with Councilmember Lavelle dissenting.
Okay, moving on to items 17... Oh, Jarrett, thank you so much. And, and to our assistant city managers, thank you as well. Moving on to items 17 and 18, Mr. Chavez, I understand we will be hearing both items together, but we'll take separate actions for each. With that said, please proceed.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Tonight, you will be asked to consider approving tentative agreements for successor memorandums of understanding or MOUs between the city and two employee associations. Those associations are the Marietta General Employees Association, otherwise known as MGEA, and the Marietta Supervisors Association, also known as MSA. These are agenda items number 17 and 18 and will require separate actions. Like you mentioned, Mayor, I'll be presenting, I'll present both items together. So as you know, most city of Marietta employees are represented by an employee organization. We have six bargaining groups here in Marietta. And tonight, we will focus on two of them. Through the process of collective bargaining, the city periodically negotiates with these employee organizations to establish or update compensation, benefits, and other terms and conditions of employment for their members. MGEA currently represents 146 non-sworn city employees across 47 different classifications. And MSA currently represents 33 non-sworn city employees across 26 lead and supervisory classifications. The previous MOUs between the city and the Marietta General Employees Association and the Marietta Supervisors Association cover the period July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2024. In March of this year, the labor representatives from the city and the associations began negotiations for a successor MOU. Since then, they have had multiple meetings, negotiated in good, in good faith, and have reached a tentative agreement on a fair and equitable compensation package. This agreement was approved by a majority vote from the members of each association. The tentative agreement for a successor MOU with each association spans a three-year term from July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2027. And the primary compensation term is a base pay adjustment each year. The tentative agreement with MGEA includes a 4% base pay cost of living adjustment, or COLA, and an additional 1% equity adjustment for the Public Safety Dispatcher 1 and 2 classifications, and an additional 5% for the Building Inspector 1 classification. The tentative agreement with MSA also includes a 4% base pay COLA for, for all employees represented by MSA, with an additional 1% market equity adjustment for the Public Safety Dispatch Supervisor classifications. If approved, these adjustments would become effective on September 8th, 2024. For both groups, the year two, or fiscal year 2025, '26, COLA and base pay will be the lesser of 4% or the annual change in the agreed-upon consumer price index. In year three, which is fiscal year 2025, or 2026, '27, we introduce a new approach. We will consider both inflation using CPI and the city's year-over-year recurring revenues. The COLA will be the lesser of the annual change in the agreed-upon CPI or the year, year-over-year percentage change in recurring revenue with a guaranteed minimum COLA of 2% and a maximum of 4%. Any pay, any base pay adjustment above 2% will require the city's recurring revenues to grow by more than 2%. The tentative agreement with each association also includes the following benefits for all represented employees. The New Year's Eve, New Year's Eve Day holiday will be increased from a half-day to a full-day holiday for both groups. The monthly health allowance, which is used to pay for medical insurance, will increase to $1,891.28 for both groups, effective January 1st, 2025. And for MGA, this increase is phased in starting on September 8th, 2024, and aligning with a higher amount on January 1st, 2025. And the annual amount the city matches for deferred compensation, retirement plan contributions, will increase by $400 for MGA and $200 for MSA. Each agenda item includes a copy of the fully executed tentative agreement detailing all of the deal points for each association. Staff has prepared a resolution for each association for the city council's consideration. a resolution for each association for the city council's consideration. Adoption of each resolution would approve the tentative agreement for a successor MOU with that association for the period July 1, 2024, to June 30th, 2027. The fiscal impact of implementing the MGA MOU is approximately 5.1 million over three years. And the fiscal impact of implementing the MSA MOU is approximately 1.8 million over three years. If approved, the terms of the tentative agreements for successor MOUs will become effective immediately, and will be memorialized in the successor MOU, which will, which will be brought back to the city council for final approval at a later date. I'd like to conclude my report by expressing my gratitude to everyone involved in bringing this item, involved in this process and bringing this item to tonight, from the MGA and MSA labor representatives, to the city's labor representatives, city council, the city manager, the assistant city managers, city attorney's office, the finance team, the city clerk's office, a variety of subject matter experts throughout the organization, my HR team and all the staff work behind the scenes. Thank you, everyone. I'd be happy to any question, happy to answer any question-
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Appreciate it very much. Councilmember Lavelle?
Thank you for the report. I just wanted to say thank you for the process. You represented the, the city employees well, and it was, it was very educational for me to sit through these meetings. There were, I can't remember how many we had, but it was a lot. And to be here now, and hopefully have some resolve for city employees, keep everyone happy, and, you know, us being top, you know, near the top of market in a great workplace, kudos to you and your team.
Thank you.
Seeing no other council members in the queue, Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Fantastic. We'll bring it back for discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none. We have a motion by Councilmember Holliday, a second by MPT Warren. Please vote.
And this is a reminder, Madam Mayor, this is for Resolution 24-4783 regarding MGEA.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. And now, if we can move on to the motion for item number 18. Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. We have a first from Holliday.
Motion carried by Holliday, second by Stone. Please vote.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to number it, 19, Updated Marietta Management Professional and Confidential Employees Compensation Plan. Madam City Attorney, may we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Following up on those items, this item relates to what has previously been known as the Management and Confidential Employees Plan. But part of what this does is it revised the name of that group. It's now going to be known as the Management and Confidential Employees Compensation Plan. So, instead of MNC, it's going to be the MPC. It also changes the community services director to the list of department heads. The assistant management analyst position is deleted from the list of management positions, which was inadvertently left in two sections the last time this was brought to you. And then the deputy fire chief and fire marshal were added to the list of classifications that are provided with a vehicle to match the actual practice of the group. As for the compensation terms, there will be a monthly health contribution amount that will be increased by about $143 per month. And then there will be COLAs for fiscal year 25, 26, and 26 and 27. The COLA for 25, 26 will be CPI not to exceed 4%. And for the second year, 26, 27, it will be CPI between 2% and 4%, depending on CPI and city budgets. That's the end of the presentation. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. We will take questions. Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Thank you so much. Bring it back for discussion. Any discussion from council? Seeing none. Let's call for a motion in a second, please. Motion carried by Councilmember Holliday, second by Councilmember DeForest. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to governing body announcements. Governing body announcements is an opportunity for council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements shall not exceed two minutes. The city clerk will use a computerized timer. Councilmember DeForest?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. My events I attended, although the last governing board announcements for all of us, I'm sure was four or five pages, this one is short and sweet. Attended the Menefee Rotary Board meeting to speak about higher education. I was happy to attend that with Councilwoman Lisa Sobek as well. And then, also, I chaired the Southwest Higher Education Coalition meeting, and there's some exciting stuff coming from that that we'll be announcing at the next meeting. So, thank you so much. If you need to get ahold of me, I'm always available, either by email or cell. Please feel free, if you want to get ahold of me sooner, then shoot me a text. So, thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Lavelle?
Thank you. I went to two ribbon cuttings this, last week, I believe. Well, first one was for citizen fitness. I, I've always said, no matter, you know, I, I do own a fitness company myself, and any fitness companies that come to the, the community are, are, are good. Anything that gets anyone to move at any time is something I would love to see more of. So, it was really cool. They, they had the ribbon cutting, great turnout, and in a completely different direction of fitness and health. I went to Capriati's sandwich shop ribbon cutting, and had myself the Wagyu cheesesteak, like the, their version of it. It was amazing. They have a, a lot of great options that I didn't think existed as a sandwich connoisseur myself. So, if you haven't been there yet, go check it out. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also attended the grand opening of Capriati's, but I, I did not eat, because it's too early for me. I typically don't have breakfast, although John was on his second meal of the day by 10 o'clock. And then, along with Mayor Stone and MPT Warren, we attended the dedication ceremony for the Menefee Justice Center, which, as short-staffed as we are with our judiciary in this area, it's, it's a welcome addition. So, it was a well-attended, very nice event, a lot of dignitaries there, a lot of judges I had never heard of before, but they were all there.
One in particular you have heard of?
I did.
Yeah.
Your nephew.
Judge Stone.
Judge Stone.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. On August 21st, I had the honor of representing my colleagues at the Marietta Waldemar Chamber of Commerce New Member Mixer. We had a great time. It was very well-attended, and it's nice to get to know the new businesses that have come into town. So, that was a nice evening. On the 23rd, I, along with Mayor Stone and Councilmember Holliday, I too attended the dedication ceremony for the Menefee Justice Center. What a beautiful building that is. We need this in this area, so I was very happy to see that. I too attended Capriati's. I did not stay for a sandwich, because he was occupying all their time ordering. So, I rushed over to the Marietta Library Pollinator Garden opening, which I missed, but what a beautiful, beautiful setting. I cannot even begin to tell you how lovely that is, and I can't wait to see it in the spring. It has beautiful plants. It has a board that tells you what has been planted, and what kind of species will go to those plants. So, butterflies, and hummingbirds, and everything you can think of in a garden, it is there. And it was just absolutely beautiful. So, I got there just in time to get a picture taken. Then I had the, the pleasure, right from there, ran over to the Knowles and attended the Ladies Society Luncheon, which is always fun. They're a wonderful group of ladies in Knowles, and they do a lot of wonderful things. And to be involved, to there, invited to lunch was lovely. And then I attended, along with our mayor, the Marietta Waldemar Chamber Coffee with the City. And Bob, you did a fabulous job with you and your team, telling everybody about traffic, and improvements, and everything that's going on in the city. So, thank you so much. That concludes my report.
Thank you, MPT Warren. I'm going to defer my governing body announcements to the next city council meeting. Moving on to council member requests to add or withdraw items to future agendas. Now's the time for council members to request or add or withdraw items to future agendas. There'll be no discussion on the request. A brief explanation of the request may be given. The merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Now, are there any requests from my colleagues? Seeing none, but guess what? I have a few things that I want to bring forward. First, Bob, you did a great job, but as you know, I'm, I'm frustrated. I'm so frustrated with the traffic. I have a solution, and I'd like to discuss it at our next meeting. We do not need any staff time. It's going to be a, a brief discussion, and you're either going to support my idea or not. So, I need consensus to, for a future agenda item to bring back a discussion and an idea to mitigate traffic congestion.
I'm happy to, at any time, hear anything that will improve traffic.
Yes, yes, yes.
Have my attention.
Yeah, I know. She's got my attention, too.
We have consensus. So, thank you so much. The next one, you're going to think I'm, I'm crazy. But, well, I, I already know you all do anyways. But, the, the high-density apartments, the affordable housing apartments, everything that is going on, we really have not addressed it in a way that I believe our residents should hear about this. Jarrett, wasn't Jarrett, David, sorry, David, you did a great job today. It's not enough. We need another layer of communication to really explain to the residents what is going on, because nobody has a clue. Everybody thinks it's just Marietta. They have no idea that this is a mandate from the state of California. So, what I'd like to do is, I like to agendize a discussion, to have a town hall meeting at our amphitheater for our residents. So, not going in any further what that looks like, but I'm looking for consensus to have that discussion.
Real point of clarity, discussion or presentation to the community?
Presentation to the community.
Mayor, could I jump in?
Yes.
We scheduled that already. We're doing that. We just don't have a date. So, we can just have that conversation and then have a date.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's how good she is.
That's how good she is. Fantastic. Okay. So, you're bringing, so it is going to be agendized to come back for discussion? Okay, that's fine. Okay, so that concludes any council members' requests to add or withdraw items. With that, we will adjourn with no further business. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.